Huh?
There we go.
Yeah, there's an update. It's not big.
I love that.
For my cars.
Who's your from?
Like you guys.
What we have here is a failure to communicate. Right over their head. Yes, I agree. It's hilarious. Yeah, it's hilarious. Like, seriously?
Posted this stuff this morning, early on.
You good, Mike?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, we will call to order the meeting for the Shenandoah City Council Wednesday, February 12th, 2020, at 7:00 PM. Call to roll and notice that everyone is here. We're going to stand and say the pledge of allegiance if you would like to stay standing with us. I'll say a quick invocation for us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, a teeter republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Dear Lord, we just come before you tonight and, as always, we want to start off by saying thank you. Thank you for your grace, for your love, for your forgiveness. And most of all, thank you for loving us when we are imperfect, even though you love us perfectly. We're going to make our way through this agenda tonight. We're going to do the best job that we can in an effort to honor you as we deliberate on these items. And we try to keep moving Shenandoah forward and make it the best possible community for our families and our friends to live in. We appreciate everybody that's here tonight, all the residents, all the council members, all the staff, all the strategic partners, everybody that takes part and gives time to make sure that Shenandoah is the best possible place to live, work, pray, and play. We pray all these things in your son's name and all God's people said. Amen. Okay, well, good evening, everybody. We will move right into item five, which is Citizens Forum. And I am happy to say that we have a couple of people that have signed up to speak. We love it when our residents come and give us feedback and guidance. So we will start off with, and I hope I'm pronouncing this correctly, Kenneth Duhl. Is that correct? Come on up, Mr. Duhl. If you would please, just state your name and your address for the record. And residents are invited to speak with, yeah, is there some, Chris, is there some? Is there a way we can pull that down or give?
No, it's okay.
Okay. Residents are invited to speak for three minutes on matters that are on the agenda or not on the agenda.
Good evening and thank you all very much. I'm Ken Duhl. We live in the Avalon Oaks neighborhood. First of all, I wanted to say thanks to the ladies at the info desk and the folks that work behind. We had a leaning tree and it was really becoming a huge issue. I brought it to them and I got the runaround from Woodlands Township. Shenandoah Council took it on and you were able to get a response from the Woodlands. Lo and behold, this morning, a white flag appeared on that tree. So, thank you very much. The next question is, when are we going to get the solar powered lights at Avalon Oaks entrance? They seem to work really, really good. I know you can't give me an answer, but just wanted to let you all know. The last thing, most important, is to rich. I took you on a few years ago.
I remember.
A lot of things have changed. I've changed a lot, but just wanted to let you know what's wrong. Look forward to the future if you decide. And again, I'd like to thank all of you.
Thank you, please, for all their help and neighborhood help. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you.
Appreciate it.
So I'm going back to the team here.
No worries. Next up, Dr. Jim Wallace.
Hi, my name is Dr. Jim Wallace. I live at 216 Silverwood Ranch Drive here in Shenandoah. I previously appeared before you on August 28th, when we were in sort of the heat of the energy discussions. And appreciated that opportunity. Subsequent to that, there's, that subject came up a number of times. And you put it in the budget and then on December the 11th, you authorized the action to go forward. Unfortunately, every time it was coming up, I was not able to attend council because of travel schedule and other things. But I did watch the videos online. That's one thing I appreciate. If I'm not here, I can actually see what goes on. And I read the materials that were posted online, including those of energy. And basically, I'm here to say thank you. Thank you for hearing the concerns of the people. Thank you for taking action. And I know energy is working on this. They still haven't connected everything on the Wellman Loop, but I know that's going to be happening. And I want to thank you all for taking the action you did. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Wallace. Okay, well, that's it for this round of Citizens Forum. As always, you're welcome to sign up for the second round if something comes up that you'd like to comment on. That moves us to item six, which is council inquiry. Does anybody have anything right now?
Yeah, I do, yeah.
Go ahead, Ron.
We might as well get an update on where Entergy is on the Wellman Loop.
Good idea.
I put in a call to Entergy today and we had scheduled a meeting a couple of weeks ago. They've had people out, but we are expecting some designs and an invoice for the city's portion of that Wellman project. We're also following up with them on a few other city-related items. So we're hoping to schedule that meeting on, not the meeting on Monday, but to have contact with them on Monday to set the next meeting.
And not to get too deep into the weeds, but if I'm not mistaken, the reason for the delay in the meeting was their chief engineer got hospitalized.
Correct.
Is that correct? Yeah. So we, our thoughts are with him. We hope, he's a really good guy. We've worked with him on several occasions and I certainly hope he's okay. Over and above this project, his health is important. He's a nice guy. And so, thank you for staying on top of that and looking forward to that being completed. Anything else? Go ahead.
Before I forget.
Yeah.
Shenandoah Sharks registration for residents will start tomorrow. That runs through the 27th. If you're a resident who has not been on the team before, we do need to email the president. That should be on their Facebook page. If you don't have, if you can't get ahold of them, email me. I will forward that email to them. So.
Very good.
Get registered, guys.
Yeah. Thank you, Mike. Okay, with that, we will move into item seven, which is discussion regarding curb address painting. This is a discussion-only item.
Yes, Mayor and Council. First, I'd like to apologize for missing the last meeting. I was at a training for my water licensing, so I wasn't able to attend. But I did watch the videos, as the doctor mentioned earlier, to catch up on what was discussed. There was a lot of, a lot of good discussion about the address curbs. And one of the main things I pulled from the discussion was council was looking for, what was, well, what was presented was a black-on-white example. And there was some discussion about getting some more attractive options, maybe even adding logos. So staff has put together a few examples. You can look on the, on the screens. Some examples of what, that you can look at, decide, you know, if you like it, if you don't like it. And then I've also got pricing. So, Chris, if you can go back up. So one option is keeping the black-on-white. And this is, all of these have reflective glass beads applied to them after they're painted. This is adding our logo in whole. The price for that was going to be $35 per home. Staff's opinion is, we kind of looked at this, is it's, it's kind of a lot to have the entire logo on there. But we wanted to present it so you could see what it looked like. Another option was to use a smaller, you know, or smaller logo mark if you go to the next one. This logo mark you'll, you'll see on the community signs when there isn't an insert in there. That's on the signs there. It's a little smaller. That's another option. And if you scroll again, with the logo mark, it's $30. This added a little color. You know, this one, again, included the logo mark. You can have a green, blue. Those are our green and blue colors that we use on city letterhead and throughout the city. We use those colorations. And then if you want to go, oh, that's, sorry, that's $40, $40 for the two-tone. And if you want to go even fancier and make it kind of look like a flag, that's $45 for that. Or you could just go back to where it's just lettering and a background. You could change the color of the background. And those pricing, that pricing is going to basically be around $19, $20 if you just don't want any logos, any, any sort of markings, but just an address number and a background. So you have those to kind of look at, decide, you know, what you kind of like about it, what you don't like. And then there's, there's a few other discussion items about it that we can go over if you don't have any questions right now.
Using an average, what would it cost if the city paid for everybody's?
So there's about 1,100 homes. So if it was $30, $33,000 to do every home.
I like the option two. I would take off the tacky S and just use our tree. But it would still denote Shenandoah, a little, little less than the plain. Just a personal thought in terms of a, I agree, the full logo's way too busy.
Right.
The two-tone looks, looks nice with some color behind it, but the price doesn't justify, you know what I mean, to add another $10. What's that?
I don't like the two-tone at all.
Yeah, but the price to me rules it out, but.
Yeah, well, even if it was affordable.
Well, I don't like the green. I would have done it with the, the blue behind the tree, but even so.
And you could do that. You could do a blue background.
There you go, that's true.
Thirty, $33,000 is way more than I would want to pay for the city to do it. So if what we're trying to do is come up with guidelines for other people to use if they want to pay for it, then that's, that's our exercise.
Jeff, so that survey monkey, what was the results of that?
Generally, and Debbie, correct me if I'm wrong here, but generally, there's about 80% of people who said they would want it, 20% who said they, they wouldn't want it. Others, 80%, who said they want it, basically, if the city pays for it, they want it. If not, they don't want it.
How many people total did we have respond to it?
105.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Somewhere around, somewhere less than 10% of our homeowners.
And the dollar, and the dollar amount on the survey was $50.
Or less, right, because we didn't know.
I know.
What it'd be. Now, now, there are some things that should be discussed, you know, considered. One of the main thing, one of the main concerns staff had was when you get into neighborhoods with HOAs or even more restrictive, they're privately owned streets or they're not even public city-owned streets. My opinion is we couldn't just go in there and slap our paint on their streets. They might not like that. So if, as we talked about, if we were going to do this and push this through as a program for all residents, they would be required to have a letter from their HOA saying that they were allowed, you know, to get it painted on the curb, because the last thing you want is the city to send a contractor in and.
I would assume we would do that for each of these HOAs to say, you know, basically, if anybody in here wants it, you would, would you allow it? I mean, each of these groups has a meeting in a group and a board that would either approve every, you know, say yes in this neighborhood or no. I don't think every individual, my point is every individual owner shouldn't have to go through that process.
Okay, so, well, I guess that puts onus on the city to, to.
Just ask and, like, before we, you know, before we would present this, we'd ask, because that way we could tell the people, hey, you know, your HOA is not allowing curb painting.
So we, we did talk to, I believe it was the Marion's HOA, just kind of floated the idea.
Yeah.
They said, yeah, that, that, we probably won't have a gripe about it. However, how often is it going to be maintained? And that was the first question. How often is the city going to come back in and repaint it so it looks nice? Which, you know, now you're setting yourself for a reoccurring fee every two to three years, depending on, you know, we, we do have a street sweeper, so they'd see a little more wear and tear. You know, maybe not on the private roads, but that was the first question is, when's the city going to come back and paint it every two, three years?
So if I remember correctly, one of the main reasons we were looking for this is just, one, first responder, for safety ultimately, for first responders being able to find the right home. Two, deliveries obviously are, are big issues. So do we currently have a city ordinance that requires homes to be marked what their address actually is?
Not that I could find. Chief and I spoke about it. We couldn't find anything, nor could we find anything regulating, painting addresses on the curb.
May I suggest, maybe we start there first and make it the responsibility of the homeowner, identify their own property? I know in, in the businesses that I have and the locations, that we're definitely required to have plain, visible identification of our address. I mean, that's one of the first things each fire marshal comes out and does, make sure that our house, or our properties are marked with specific identification. I would think rather than the city coming out with, you know, $33,000 for an option like this, that, to me, that's a homeowner responsibility. I mean, that.
Well, that's why I initially floated this as a, through the city so that it's done quality.
The only problem is, is that it's, if it's not maintained, then what started out nice is going to look dilapidated in two to three years and if people decide they're not going to keep it up.
Well, even if the homeowner does that, it's the same thing. I mean, if the homeowner puts it out there, it means.
But if we do it, it's our, it's our responsibility.
We do it, then we have to maintain it.
And, and it doesn't have to be marked on the curb. It could be marked effectively on, you know,
mailbox.
Mailboxes, the house itself.
Do we currently have a problem, I mean, other than Amazon delivering the wrong package, which I don't think you're ever going to fix that, do we currently have a problem not being able to find houses when we need to?
I can speak, you know, from personal experience as a first responder for this city. Is, it's difficult, especially in, you know, the oldest neighborhood, the Valley. It's, sometimes it's tough to find the right address. I mean, you find it in the end. But, you know, don't, don't rely on the mailboxes, you know. Try to find a house that's got it and then start counting by fours and, I mean, you get there, but it is difficult.
I just, I try to imagine driving down Shenandoah and what, and what all those curb signs are going to look like, you know, glaring back at me. I just feel like that's going to, I don't know. Our city's not going to be quite as pretty. I can't even, I can't even think of any that have one in front of it right now that comes to mind.
You talking about the curbs?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's some unenchanted and I only know that because of the flags, but it helps.
There are a few, there are a few scattered around the city and, and to the point that you're making, Mayor, and also Ted. You know, just because I've, I've been spending a lot of time on this, as I was driving around through neighborhood, I saw an area and it was hard to see it because it was so unmaintained. But every house in this whole neighborhood had their addresses on the curb and it was a, a green background with white lettering. You could hardly read the numbering anymore because it was so unmaintained. And just every single house had it. In my opinion, it didn't look very good.
And nothing so permanent as change. I mean, we're going to paint it, the postal service will go to cluster mailboxes or want to or do something like that, you know. I've lost the warm fuzzies for it myself.
Yeah, I lost the warm fuzzy when I heard it was $33,000.
Me too.
That's what the city pays for it, so.
No, exactly.
Is there, is there anything prohibiting homeowners right now from putting their own address on the curb?
Not that we can find. There's no ordinances.
I think the existing ones that you mentioned a minute ago, I think they did that on their own.
Yeah, yeah.
Correct.
I think it was all on their own.
Long as it doesn't have them in three colors.
I think this one has red, white, blue, and black. A little Texas flag on them. Okay, but there's nothing against homeowners doing it, right?
No.
No, it's just a sign. No words changed.
Do we want to set a standard?
Well, that was my, that's, the follow-up to that is, do we want to say, if you're going to do this.
It has to be within these parameters, right?
Don't you let P and Z kick it around and see what.
That's not a bad idea. That's, that's actually pretty good. Can we do that?
I hate to over-litigate. Maybe we should have somebody else look at it and see what they think.
There you go.
Yeah, let's, let's do that. Let's take this in front of P and Z and just think, what their, see what their idea is.
I agree. That's a good one. Good job.
Okay, moving on then. Thank you for that research, Joseph. We appreciate it. Moving on to item eight, which is discussion regarding parking at the toddler park.
All right, Mayor and Council. Let me pull up my screen here. We talked too long and it went into screensaver mode. So this was brought up by, at, during the last MDD meeting. The MDD president, Byron Beavers, mentioned that he would, he'd like staff to kind of look into designing, seeing, checking feasibility of adding parking at the toddler park. And the reasoning that he had behind it was, let's get an idea of what it would cost. MDD could discuss whether or not they wanted to fund it and then bring that to council. You know, if MDD wanted to fund it, bring it to council. As we talked about it, staff, it almost felt like we're kind of getting the cart in front of the horse. We shouldn't be designing this for the MDD with the hopes that they might fund it, that council might accept it. Because in the end, it's, irregardless of funding, it's up to council whether or not you'd want to do the project. So we thought we'd bring it before, before you as a, as a body to discuss this. Honestly, to gauge interest and to kind of bring you what research that staff had done. So I'll jump into that research right away. When, when we looked at the site, as far as trying to squeeze in parking, it's, it's pretty tight. We have the two ramps that lead into the toddler park. And there's a drawing up on the screen that you can refer to if you need to. And then we have the connecting pathway between those two ramps that lead into the toddler park. So using our, our spacing requirements, the IDC have a 19-foot wide and then 24 for parallel parking. You can see that you could potentially squeeze in two parking spots. You are going to have to deal with a fiber box that's in that area, as well as two water valves that are inline valves on a main line. If you try to go to three, you're definitely removing one of the ramps, relocating it, doing a lot more concrete work. Now, another problem with this is our IDC requirements would not allow for what you see here because you're maneuvering to get into the spaces, is on your main travel lanes. So to make it actually comply with our IDC, which would be recommended, you'd also want a 14-foot aisle between your parking spots and the roadway. And when you add that, you are almost have concrete to the toddler park fence. To maybe get two spaces. Take, take it for what it is. That's what we found. We did, if we did this here, what you see on the screen, the, the two spaces and getting a variance to our own IDC, cost is probably going to be around $40,000 to $50,000 when you take in the work that needs to be done. If you try to get three spaces, you can add another $25,000 for the additional concrete rework you're going to have to do. You may need a retaining wall. It's, it's, it's always difficult to come in after a project to try to add something rather than have it in there from the, from the get-go.
So have we, I know we talked a while back when this was first designed, have we looked at, one of the issues is the curb and simply opening the road up a little bit, how much, how that would be possible so that we're not doing the full rework, we're just, you're still going to park on the street, but the road itself will be wider, which will allow cars to take a wider path around it? Does that make sense what I'm saying?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
You could actually kind of widen the street.
So you'll still have parking in the travelway. It'll just be a wider.
You'd just be wider, which would allow traffic to pass easier around it and, you know. That's, that's another thought.
That's definitely a possibility. Now, one of the, the chief complaints for wanting to look into this was, you know, you've got mothers and fathers getting their children out, you know, opening the doors into the main lanes of traffic to get the car seat out and, and that was the concern is you're unloading children into the main travelways of a road.
So to the east of the toddler park, there's some green space. And we looked at this like three years ago.
Years ago, yeah.
That you could actually potentially have pull-in parking spot. And I don't know if Chris can pull up Google Earth or whatever, but.
Yeah, that strip on the east side.
Yeah, you got, on the east side, you could potentially put three, I think we measured it off. It was like you could put three pull-in parking spots where they're not running parallel, you're not doing parallel parking on the street, rather you're actually pulling into a parking space. And I want to say at the time that I thought we estimated it to be like $25,000 or something. I mean, it was.
For that?
Expensive, not, not, not cheap by any means, but less expensive than what we're talking about here for, I think, more functional parking.
Right, and it'll get you completely off the road.
Yeah, it gets you completely off the road.
Now, that is directly over, I think it's a 30-inch gas line.
That's the gas line.
But that's not a deal killer. I bet it is something to be aware of.
Put two sort of nice extra wide spots in there that would.
Now, that's a space we can look into, but, but I mean, this is good because, you know, what we want to get at staff is, does council have any desire to add parking at the toddler park? Because if overall there isn't a desire, then, you know, we don't need to spend.
I drive by here just about every day and I don't even see usually one car parked. And this is in the range of 4:30 to 6 o'clock. I don't really see any cars there.
Well, that's because the toddler park primarily gets used by people who can walk there. And so I said, I said all along, when this toddler park was first built, I had a toddler. I was never going to take my toddler to the toddler park because I wasn't going to park on the street. You know, there's, I'm trying to get him in and out. It just, you know, I have to get him in the car, drive over here, park, try to get him out in traffic. It's just, you know, this was a, you know, this was a million dollars worth of park that. It's just, you know, this was a, you know, this was a million dollars worth of park that I was never gonna use as a resident. Whereas I think if you do put some, I've always said if you put some parking there, I think you would get more use out of other residents around the city. It's still, it's still limited by the fact there's no restroom or changing station there. So you get a three-year-old and they have to go to the bathroom, you're in trouble. I mean, so, which still has limitations, but this is at least one good step in the right direction.
I guess it'd be curious that if we were gonna do anything at all is to have some kind of count of the cars on, on an average over a period of time, now that the weather's starting to get warmer. I'd like to know how many cars are there, because again, when I go through, it doesn't look like a problem to me.
But I don't know that you're gonna know what the count would be because I think people don't come because of it, if that makes sense. Like I, like you would never see, you would never count my car there because I wouldn't come to begin with.
I can't know who won't come there, I can only count who is going there.
That's right.
Yeah, there are, there are times when the weather's particularly nice in the, in the fall and the spring. There's six or seven cars there. And my concern is particularly when somebody decides to park across the street, then it gets really tight. But again, I live fairly close there, my kids walk there. Uh, I'm more inclined to see, see people there. I drive by it every single day, probably three to five times a day easily. And, uh, there's a very, uh, consistent amount of vehicles that are parked there. Now, four-thirty to six, no. But, uh, during the day.
Yeah, during the day it gets used.
Gets used quite a bit. Four-thirty to six, then those kids are at home getting the bath, getting ready for day.
Yeah.
So from, so from this view then, the possible parking spaces are over there?
Tree line.
Right there, in the tree line.
Current image, I don't think this is current.
It's close enough. Yeah, there's no park there, but yeah, it's.
You can see the sidewalk.
Between the sidewalk and the trees, sort of in that range.
Right.
Actually, over there, closer to that property.
And it looks like, I'm doing some rough measuring with Google Earth. There, there's space for, there would be space for three, um, three side by side.
That's a lot, Dave.
Go further, um, go further west, or east, sorry.
No.
It's gonna be beyond that storm inlet.
That is an old picture, isn't it?
I dropped a little man in there and I lost myself.
Just click the arrow and step back.
Now, one of, one of the things that Joseph, that when Greg was here, Greg and I walked this, several scenarios. And one of the things that really killed it in his mind was handicap parking. Because if we do it, any kind of parking, we're gonna have to.
One of them's gotta be handicapped.
Yeah, you'll have to have one.
So you make one handicap and two regular.
Yeah, I, I think there's space.
Which is good, but then we'd probably, I don't know if we have ride enough away. We never did figure that out, but if we acquired, we might have to acquire some property to the west from that homeowner going back towards Vedder's house to make it long enough to do that. And then eliminate the second eighty-eight, right, go back this way?
Well, there, there'll be space, because one of the things back then that is not in existence now is there was a fence that was completely into city property. Uh, it's not there anymore.
It's not there.
So that freed up quite a bit of space for additional parking.
So to do what he said.
If council would like to.
That was three years ago, Rich, so we never did decide.
Look at that, it's a water tower or the water, water storage unit. Water plant one. That brings back memories.
Sure.
I remember getting demoted.
Well, at any rate, if, if this is a project that MDD wants to tackle, I, me personally, I would not be opposed to them looking into it. My opinion would be that trying to put two parallel parking spots on the street makes little or no sense. If they're gonna do it, they oughta try to look into the feasibility of those three pull-in spots, if that's cost-effective.
I agree with you, Rich, yeah. I, I think getting them off the road is, would be the number one priority.
Okay, well, we can, we can look into it. Maybe get some more, you know, rough estimates that MDD can discuss. And if they don't have any issues with funding it, then we can go into a, a deeper design with engineers.
MDD never did talk about the funding, so that was one director.
All right, thank you, Joseph. Okay, we will move on to, and, and Chris, thank you for your wonderful work on Google Earth. You were having fun over there. We'll move on to item nine, which is discussion and possible action to amend the May second, twenty-twenty election ordinance to include two additional precincts.
Can we amend the ordinance to include voting precincts thirty-three and sixty-two?
So I have a motion by Councilman Brought, I have a second by Councilman Fletcher, do we have any discussion? I guess my only question would be, I didn't see it in the agenda package, does this cost us any money? No? Okay.
No.
I'm just. Just curious.
Always good to ask.
We noticed a couple of precincts missing, so we just wanted to capture.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five oh. Item ten, discussion and possible action to award a contract for a destination market analysis.
Counsel, I can give a quick intro or you can make your motion and then discuss it?
Uh, go ahead.
Okay. Uh, if you'll recall, in budget workshop, council reallocated a hundred thousand dollars, uh, toward this destination market, um, analysis. This is a much more in-depth, um, unbiased, um, study than what we've ever done before in this city. And John did an extensive amount of follow-up, uh, we received five bids. He did a lot of follow-up on references, um, a lot of looking into each of these firms. We narrowed it down to two, and in the end, his recommendation is to go with Jones Lang LaSalle. And that is what we are recommending. If you will look at the, the table there that summarizes the, the bids that we received, you'll see that their base price is a hundred thousand, there's an add-on for thirty-two-five. Their expenses are estimated at sixteen now. Because they haven't yet visited the city or we haven't started meeting with them, we will have a scope alignment meeting. And, and then they'll get a, a true feel for the city, for what's here, what's not here, things like that. The people, the population. And we look forward to, uh, fine-tuning that scope and also potentially, uh, streamlining that estimate. So we hope that that number will go down some. We will not bring, we will not sign a contract, uh, before coming back to council with that revised scope and hopefully revised estimated cost. And John is here to take any questions.
Yeah, what, uh, just to be clear, what we are asking is city council to accept one of the bids, then we will sit down and negotiate a contract and then bring, assuming we're successful in negotiating that contract and getting firm prices, bring that back to city council for, to, for a vote on the actual contract.
That's correct.
Do you have a motion?
So you're looking for approval of the, the, basically the choice that y'all, that is already been made?
Correct, just our recommendation on the, the, uh, vendor, the firm that John recommends.
So what are they promising that we don't already have?
Uh, this will be a very, uh, in-depth study that will take about six months. It will involve, um, interviewing, um, groups of people here, looking at what we have here in terms of, you know, our, our surrounding areas, um, what, how we could direct our CBB going forward for several years to draw more visitors in, to market our hotel properties, our meeting space, um, you know, what, is there something that we haven't even thought of yet that we could promote as, as part of a, a draw for visitors?
So I thought we just did this, like a year and a half ago, not even a year and a half ago.
About two years ago, we did contract with DMO Pros and that was about, um, less than twenty-five percent of the cost. And it was a much more, um, uh, um, brief summary-type study. And what, what that was determining is, um, their recommendation for what to even do with the CBB. Do we, um, do we keep it open? How do we staff it? I don't know if you recall that study, but it was a bit, um, aggressive at the time. We did make the decision to hire a full-time director, but that study did not go into near the depth that this would.
I mean, do you think this study's gonna reveal something other than we should be focusing on the medical industry?
Uh, we, we don't really know how to predict that, but that.
I mean, because that's what the last one identified as our primary market.
If, John, if you want to add to that.
So what I can tell y'all, in the industry and the business, as you know, I sit nationally on our professional development board and I was just there with some colleagues. In the last twenty-five-plus years, the city, um, shouldn't say the city, our industry has moved tremendously from just being, without putting heads into hotel beds, into being a much bigger, broader, um, overview of analysis of what a CBB's role and function is, how that plays within the city and how cities do strategic planning for the long-term and moving forward. And it needs to be done in ways and engaging, um, cities, all of their growth and, and life cycles that they have, of looking at the assets physically on the ground, of looking at gaps and niches when you're doing a competitive analysis, market analysis of your area surrounding you and the competitive set. We exist in the fourth-largest metropolitan area in the country, and yet our immediate neighbors are Conroe, The Woodlands and Spring, um, and trying to look at all those physical assets. It's also as a city and as we have benefited and grown our sales tax base with all of the commercial real estate development, our, uh, retail development, the restaurants and our hotels. And as we're getting ready and prepared to have three new hotels come online in the next year, trying to, um, do an analysis of what that absorption is gonna be with three new hotels coming on, with additional cities and neighbors. Conroe is getting ready to do a new convention center and their hotel going along with that. There, um, I'm sure y'all are all aware that, um, Jimmy Buffett's Margarita Bill has taken over and purchased La Toretta, and that is being completely gutted and redone as we speak. So the impacts on our specific properties, and in trying to find a firm to do this, as Kathy had stated earlier, the last, um, plan that was done was primarily gathered under three very specific areas. As I recall you showing it to me during our interview process and reviewing it, that was primarily over the CBB structure. Should it be a part of the city? Should it be an independent or should it go into a chamber function? There was also analysis done about the ongoing viability and, uh, return on investment of running the visitor center itself proper. That's really what that and its governance focused in that last study. To Kathy's point, this is going out to the marketplace. We put together, this RFP was an eight-page RFP to really do a broad market analysis for us in the city to look at all of those physical assets and to try and come up with a long-term plan for the next five to ten years of what our commercial development currently is, how we are positioned against The Woodlands and Conroe and future growth in Spring. We have to look at those hotels, we have to look at the Exxon campus that's going down there and how that's gonna do demand. And so in a city that has, has benefited so much from that sales tax, we have to be very careful in looking in the future of how that, those, those assets are, are they right-sized? Are they properly done? If something people have talked about a retail apocalypse for years, well, if a retail apocalypse was supposed to come and we have five shopping centers and huge stores all along our way, what do we do with those structures? How could they be reused? How would we, as a city, move forward if that's already there? So what we've done is put out a bid to what is really top firms within the country, nationally and internationally. And Jones Lang LaSalle, for y'all, if you aren't aware of, it is, um, a Fortune 500 real estate investment and commercial, um, farm services firm. They're ranked one-eighty-ninth out of the Fortune 500. They are among the most ethical companies. The awards they've gotten for being most ethical, as well as most admired companies. They have a specialization within that corporate real estate services package and all of their offices around the world that specializes in destination and tourism hospitality. So this would be using that very specific practice. And trying to use, to have them, as Kathy said, we are trying, you can always go about saying, oh, do we need a special event center? Do we need an X? Do we need a Y? And find a firm that can do a feasibility study to help justify deal. We are trying to go out and have a firm help us engage and plan with everything that is currently on the ground, happening around us and within our city, to come up with the best uses and highest yield results for those assets that we have. And looking at other things that we could do to also spring load and do that and help protect it. So from that deal, and to do it in a way that would be sustainable and to a higher best business practice. So that's really what this is.
Are we, are we talking about essentially a hundred and fifty thousand dollars here? And that's what this JLO tourism is gonna add up to by the time you figure in the travel expense and the alternate?
Well, I don't know, the, the alter, the alternate, to be clear in what that was, when we were doing our budget analysis, you asked very specifically about GDS tracking data. This is a proprietary system of theirs that they have.
How much money are we talking about here?
I'm hoping right now it's that, that we might be able to get it down to around a hundred.
This is an initial estimate, as we said, this is just.
So it's not the hundred plus the sixteen plus the thirty-two? That's not, that's not what we're talking about, or is that what the bid is?
That's what we're talking about, and that's the bid.
Okay, so we're looking at about a hundred and fifty thousand?
I think it's gonna come in substantially less than that because right now.
Substantially, tell me what substantially means.
I would say, I'm trying to gear towards around a hundred.
Okay.
A lot of this is dependent upon scope.
Hold on, hold on, let me, let me finish my train of thought here.
Sure.
How many dollars do we collect on average per hotel stay? Around seven to ten dollars, I would imagine, in hotel tax?
Well, I know our total budget right now is about one-point-four million.
Per, per hotel stay?
I don't, I can't tell you that off the top of my head. It's geared on your, and why I'm saying that is because it's predicated on the property.
What is it, per hundred dollars?
It's seven percent.
Yeah, seven dollars per, yeah, so, and our average, probably if I had to guess, our rack rate, average is probably a one-twenty-five, somewhere in that neighborhood?
Yeah.
Okay.
So what you're saying is?
It would take us like twenty years to make back, based on how many front door hotels we have. It's seven dollars a pop, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars or some, some, I mean, I'm probably doing my math wrong there, but I mean, it's, I'm sorry, it's not twenty, it's twenty thousand stays. So we, what I, I guess where I'm getting at is, is are we gonna see the ROI on this? I mean, I get that they're probably a great firm.
Sure.
But, but are we maybe overshooting our mark here a little bit? I'm just, I'm a little concerned with our size city, with the saturation of hotel market that we are going to have regardless of what we do. We're not trying to pick up a hundred percent saturation, we're trying to pick up an incremental growth because we're gonna get X amount no matter what we do. We could close the doors and we'd get X amount. Do we need to spend a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, is I guess where I'm going with this?
Well, I think, I think what we, our intent of this in our original conversations and Kathy and me when we were doing this, the city is getting ready to prepare its first strategic plan. A lot of this analysis would be used also to go into that strategic long-term city plan. We're getting the, all of these assets that we're talking about and an analysis of that with our neighbors helps us prepare as a city, how do we wanna map our growth going forward? You have to take into consideration, and I would be the first to say, I've had certain conversations with a few of you prior to this, um, in looking at future growth. Some of our, uh, previously, what was our ETJ was taken up by other cities in annexation. We are getting ready right now as a city with near three thousand residents and all of the mixed-use development within the next two years to get to a five thousand population base. And if there's any hope at all through Home Rule or anything else, that any other future growth would be available to us, I think those are the kind of things you'd also look at.
Well, and this will help us determine, should we continue to pursue sports? If so, to what extent? If so, to what extent? So, we've been operating on just, we'll try this, we'll try that, we'll try another thing. This will give us more clear focus.
I, I get it. I, I think having a consulting firm come in and help us with a little bit, with some focus is a good idea. I just, $150,000 scares me a little bit, to be honest.
Well, first of all, the add-on is, is an option. We're not necessarily pushing that. That was to collect the data that you were looking for.
Well, even at $150,000 is a lot. I mean, especially since we just spent, I don't know, what was it, 43,000 18 months ago? And I think that, in the beginning when we did that, that focus was to help determine the direction of where the CVB should go. I don't think we ever had any intent of ever individualizing that or separating that away from the city or make it in a chamber of commerce. I, I've pulled up what our RFP was two years ago and then what the proposal was from, uh, the name of the company.
GMO Press.
Yeah. And, and based on their recommendation, um, that's when we went and, and expanded our CVB and brought you in to be able to do some more strategic planning and move the CVB forward. I know we've had two stag bowls, obviously, came in and assisted greatly in both of those. But I, I think we're, I don't know, I just kind of feel like we're at a, a standstill. We don't have a specific direction as to where to go from here, but yet, we did, we did do the research two years ago and, or 18 months ago, and I, I'm just curious as to how much that's changed in that 18-month period of time, and why we haven't pursued or acted on the study that was originally done then, and how we're wanting to spend another 100,000 to basically do the same on steroids.
And that's the difference, is the previous company spent a couple of days here.
Right.
And there was not much in-depth research.
But I guess that's my question, is whether they spend two days here or two months here, there still has to be implementation.
Correct.
They're, they're just going to make suggestions, and some of those suggestions may be worthwhile for our city, and some may not. That's just how consultants go. So, um, I, I'm just wondering if there's another option besides spending 100 to 150,000 to try to get a game plan to, to move our CVB forward. Because as Mayor says, whether we make a lot of changes tomorrow or too much from now or don't, we're probably still looking at the same heads and beds in our city that we currently have.
Great, John.
Well, my question, I guess, I, I've attended a MDD meeting, and they, they said they had $100,000 that was unencumbered for feasibility study for, over on East Side for a convention center. Now, my question really is, and Kathy or Lisa can, is, is this funds coming from hot taxes? Is it coming from the general fund, or is it coming from MDD?
This, this 100,000 was, CB, so the feasibility study for the convention center was budgeted both in the MDD and the CVB. This is the CVB's.
So, we're not talking about general fund dollars?
Was there a whole that we reallocated or budgeted?
We're not talking about general fund dollars.
That's correct. CVB, CVB only.
So, so I-
And that's better, but it's still one-
I, I like this idea, because it's going-
It doesn't make it's less accountable.
It would, it would help us get a, get a better handle on, on big, big ideas. I think, I don't think we actually got what we wanted to get out of that last study. We, we were hoping to do that. We got some, we got some ideas, we got some suggestions, and I agree with-
We got John.
What?
We got John.
We got John.
And the biggest suggestion, right, was to, was to do this, and we did that. I, I think it'd be worthwhile, particularly if we can keep it around 100,000 and get, get all the bells and whistles. But to get a full analysis, the, the sports, again, we've, we've picked and, and prodded at the sports. There are some other sports opportunities around that we could, we could invest in. Does that make sense? Can we keep our hotels? And I agree, we're never going to put 100% hotels, but if we can consistently keep our hotels filled, that's not just going to benefit our hotels, that's going to benefit all the, all the businesses around it.
True, restaurants and sales.
Restaurants and sales and all that. If we can figure out how to keep our hotels at 80% through various either specific events or things that are put on sort of by other groups and we tie into, is that a better way to do it? These are, I think these are questions that they can answer. There's, there's some partnerships we can certainly work with. We know there's some stuff coming in up at the road, pull them down here. There's, there's a lot of stuff that we can do to keep our hotels filled, which is going to help keep money in Shenandoah, it's going to bring new money into Shenandoah. That's one of the things with, with hotels, is they bring new money in. And so, I think, I think that's, that's where I'd like to see this, and that's where I see this playing into a more global strategic plan for the city.
Okay, if we're, if we're going to-
Keep in mind, if I could add something.
If we're going to quit asking questions of John, which is what kind of sparked this, and we're going to get more into discussion, we probably ought to have a motion.
But we-
Unless Kathy wants to talk. She doesn't, she doesn't have to have a motion.
We're not committed until we have that contract back to council. So, if that number is not where council would like it to be, we're not committed. We have the scope alignment meeting, and we, we negotiate. So, the only time we become committed is if council approves that contract.
All right, so I'm making a motion to approve.
Okay, so we have a motion by Councilman McLeod to approve. We have a second by Councilman Raymaker. Mayor Prochamp has some more discussion.
Well, I just want to ask Bill, can we, we want not to exceed X amount of dollars?
We absolutely can.
That's, I mean, that seems-
We can either do that, or we can bring back a number. And if the number's 9 or 60, it doesn't matter if you, you're going to say yes or no.
I mean, I think you all get the idea of the number we're looking for, so, I mean.
Well, I wouldn't speak for all of us.
Your, your numbers were, I was going to say, closer to a dollar.
When we start talking about CVB money, everybody's like, oh, well, poof, it doesn't matter. Well, yeah, it does.
Yeah, it does.
It does matter. And we're just as accountable for CVB funds as we are for our, our general fund tax base. So, no, I don't share the same view that, poof, let's just do 100,000 bucks on this by any means. I, I don't think that a consultant is going to be able, I mean, we spent 100,000 dollars that we could have spent doing other things that would have brought heads in bed. I mean, we already know that there's other, there are other sports opportunities that we could be going after. It's all, if candy and nuts were, you know, the old saying, right?
Don't go sugarcoating with it.
Right. So, it still takes action, and we can have the best planning in the world and strategic plan in the world, but if nobody follows through with the action, then we've spent 100,000 dollars for what?
I'm, I'm guilty. We took the money that was earmarked for a feasibility study, we very easily moved it into, let's look at, you know, doing a broader, you know, analysis, and we didn't really hone in on a dollar amount. I got to tell you, I'm, I am scared to death of spending that kind of money on a SWOT analysis. I mean, I do those on a regular basis, it's just part of my job, and I don't get paid that kind of money for them, I promise you. To me, it just seems like a, and maybe I just don't know the industry as well, but it just seems like a lot of money. I don't disagree that it's a great endeavor, and I think that maybe if we got some outside eyes on the city of Shenandoah, they could give us some great ideas of what we could do. But it, I have a hard time believing that the return on 100,000 dollars, it's going to take a long time to net that money back out, you know, to, that's just my thought process on it.
I, I'm willing to let the negotiation take place.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's all we're talking about tonight.
Well, I understand that, but I also understand, I also understand how it goes.
We're awarding a contract, that's what's on the agenda.
But we don't have to sign the contract if we don't like the number, I guess, but it says we're going to award a contract.
And we're, we're awarding the bid, essentially. The wording is, I don't know, specific.
I would like, I didn't make the motion, but I would hope we would amend it to be more specific rather than what it says on the agenda tonight. Because we're not going to award a contract, so.
Yeah. What I would suggest is the motion is that you permit the city administrator to discuss a contract with, I think it's JLL.
Cool.
And bring that back to council.
And bring that back to council.
I'm going to actually just revoke my previous motion. That's just easier. And make a motion to authorize the city administrator to negotiate or to discuss the contract with JLL.
To be brought back to us.
To be brought back to us, of course.
Second. I have a motion by Councilman McLeod, I have a second by Councilman Raymaker. Do we have any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Item 11, discussion and possible action to adopt the following ordinance. An ordinance of the City of Shenandoah, Texas, amending Chapter 91 Code of Ordinances regulating certain aspects of major hospitals.
Make a motion to approve.
I have a, I have a motion by Councilman McLeod to approve. I have a second by Councilman Fletcher. Do we have any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Item 12, discussion and possible action regarding relocation of servers from the CVB.
Uh, Mayor and Council, currently our backup storage and data is being held at the CVB location on Navy Memorial. Their current lease is up, is ending August 2020. They will be coming back over here until we find them a permanent space. In order to relocate our backup door, storage and data, we need to find a new location that follows disaster recovery standards. The, Chris worked on figuring out a location, and he proposes the water tower. There's a, there's a, there's a room back there that they can retrofit to hold all that data and storage, and he's here for any other questions about it. So, this agenda item is just to approve a project to start retrofitting that, um, location and to start moving over in preparation for the CVB to no longer be using that space.
Chris, are you going to connect the two?
Hold on. Well, if you have a question, Chris, that's fine. Go ahead.
I'm sure there's a burning question that we want to ask.
Well, I, I know the water tower doesn't-
Why, why would you put all your data under the water tower? Actually, uh-
Are the servers waterproof?
Yes, no, they're not. No, we, that was, it's actually interesting, because Joseph and I got talking about it, and I actually made a few phone calls and made some consultations with some of our data partners and even ICTX, and I got their input on it. And actually, it's, they're all intrigued by it. It's actually, because the facility is secure, as far as disaster preparedness and recovery, it kind of checks most of your major checkboxes. It's a secure facility, it's elevated, it's impervious to most natural disasters, except for a direct hit by, say, a F5 tornado. Even that, Joseph and I did some little research trying to figure out any known water towers were affected by tornadoes, and we really couldn't find any. But the flooding, hurricanes, anything, any natural disaster that we have, it, you know, really, that's where you put your data, somewhere that's not going to be affected by, you know, things in your area. It's generated. The only real detriment is it's still in our geographical area. But the advantage is, is that we do have to have an off-site backup. So, with the loss of the CVB, we need to relocate that equipment somewhere else. So, the cost is, I don't know if you've been in the water tower, but there's an elevated, there's a second floor, there's a room already built out where we have existing radio equipment. We would put a new data cabinet in there that's air-conditioned, some electrical modifications, and fire suppression, and alert and monitoring, which we don't really have that now. We really should have something over there for fire suppression and monitoring. And then, you know, if the question comes up of, you know, taking it completely off-site and using a cloud storage, we certainly should and will, are going to do some of that, but moving the whole of our data would be, it's cost prohibitive, it'd be about 20,000 a year for us to take everything that we have and store it off-site. So, this is a good in-between. It's a good step-off point for us to store, back up our data, have redundancy. This also gives, uh, some infrastructure for going forward. We're going to do some more security cameras for the water tower facility, different monitoring. So, we'll have a facility now to put all that. Especially, we're adding cameras, recording systems and such. But if anybody has any particular questions or about that.
Where, where were you four years ago when they decided to put the CVB? I'm glad you found the location.
Well, it was, I mean, it made sense. It's not, it's not a secure facility. You know, obviously, we pay, we pay ICTX for having a fiber connection over there. And we, we would be paying ICTX for construction of the fiber to the tower, and then there's conduit and some other stuff that has to go up in the tower. But they're giving us significant discounts on our, our, our annual usage of that fiber.
But we're never going to lose a lease on our water tower.
No, that's exactly right. So, even if the, the CVB does relocate somewhere else other than this building, then that's, that's permanent. We don't have to mess with that anymore. And we have a site that, that I feel pretty confident that, that, you know, we've got some flexibility to do with as we need to, and, and we've got enough room over there. It's, I think it's a good solution, and in discussions I had with other partners, they thought it was a great solution. I told them, I told, give me reasons why we shouldn't do it. And really, they, other than the geographical separation, they really couldn't come up with a reason why. It's unique because of the construction of our tower, it affords us the ability to do that. Most towers aren't built that way. So, it's, it's a plus for us.
So, these servers are redundant servers to anything we got here in this building?
Well, what we're going to do is that we're going to put all our backup storage over there. So, all the data we back up here, it gets back, it goes over.
So, it's not really a-
And then, we're going to add additional storage, and then when I, when I bring our disaster recovery plan, which is a, covers our communications and what we do in all different scenarios, there'll be some other things added over there. So, we will have backups, redundancies, and so on. Yes.
So, how about connectivity to this?
Uh, they're going to install, excuse me, a fiber connection between the two buildings. Uh, we own, well, we pay for it, the construction, but it'll have the gigabit fiber between the buildings.
We're going to actually own and take care of all of that connection ourself. They're just going to do the construction.
Well, no, it's ICTX circuit, so any, if it goes down, I mean, they're, they're bound contractually to maintain that. We, I mean, we don't physically own the fiber in the ground.
Okay. Is, is there a reason that we shouldn't? I know we're paying like $1,000 a month to connect us to, to CVB and us.
We're paying half that now. We, I negotiated it down, so.
But, but that's, that's a lot of money just to, just to connect two buildings. But I'm, I'm wondering if, is there a reason? I mean, we own or have right-of-way from here to there, right? From here to our water tower, we didn't across the street.
Well, the difference is, it's not just physical laying the fiber, it's the, it's the security and the switch network. So, basically, they give you what they call a point-to-point.
So, we're doing point-to-point VPN over their network?
It's, it's what they call an MPLS circuit. It's fiber that they own, that we lease, and it's strictly our data runs over it. We, it's our, it's our pipe.
Okay.
Or, you know, if we're talking about constructing on fiber, it would be, you know, tremendously more expensive. The only other option we could explore would be doing point-to-point wireless.
No.
You know, which microwave 50 gig, you know, 100 gig, it's unlicensed wireless, I mean, but that, that's, that's about three times the cost.
Yeah, yeah.
But it's, it's forever, I mean, more or less, but in the, in the long-term, it's, 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 you know, it's, it's probably long-term more expensive, but in short-term, it's, it's the least expensive option. And we don't own the hardware, so if something goes wrong, all we do is pick up the phone. They, they're bound contractually for the business services to take care of it. So, it's less of an impact on the city.
So, basically, still going to be paying 500 bucks a month?
No, we will be paying, right now, we, we were paying about 1,000 a month. They basically cut the whole thing in half, and when the CVB vacates that, they'll transfer that cost over to the water tower. What will happen, though, is that if the CV, CVB relocates to another facility other than City Hall, we will, of course, have to establish some kind of communication with that building for our network to extend over there.
When is the end of our lease?
August, I believe.
August.
Yes.
But the only ding that I would have here is that this probably should have been in the budget that we did in August.
Well, and that's good, that's a good point, and I don't, I'm not really sure why we didn't, you know, talk about construction cost and relocation cost during the budget, so.
I mean, other than that, I like the idea. I just wish we had thought of it for budget work.
Sure, absolutely. But I mean, if you have any concerns or questions, I'd be happy to, you know, address those.
Okay, do I have a motion?
So, moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Brock to approve. I have a second by Councilman Raymaker. Do we have any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Item 13, discussion and possible action regarding a proposal for the design of the new monument sign. It actually says new monument signs on the agenda, but I believe we're just talking about one sign, aren't we, Kathy?
Correct. In the specific case, we're talking about phasing it. If, if we opt for a new design, we'd phase the others in over time, so then it would be signs.
Didn't we, would we just do this? I mean, I, I'm confused.
Would you like a little background?
Would you like a little background?
Yeah, I can. That's like five years ago or something, yeah? That was yesterday.
Yeah.
Right. So, part of Lifetime Fitness's development is they're cutting a turn lane into one of our existing medians. And our monuments are right in the middle of where the road's gonna be, which necessitates them moving that monument sign. The chance of it surviving that move are low, in my opinion. And so, staff thought, well, maybe if they're gonna be destroying the monument, maybe we're gonna look at what, you know, make the replacement match the design that we have at our entrances, say, at Savannah, Shenandoah. Because the signs we're talking about here are entrances into the city. Currently, we have four of them. There's one on Research Forest Drive. There's this one on Six Pines that we're talking about, one on Pinecroft, and one on Medical Plaza Drive. If you've seen them, they're maybe about three, three and a half feet high, you know, brick and stone with our logo carved in them. That's the old logo, because they were installed in about 13 years ago. So, the thought was, if they're gonna be trashing an old monument and building a new one, why don't we design a new entrance sign that matches that similar style of the signs that we just had Landology design for us? So, when they put it back, we can say, well, we want you to put it back, and we want it to look like this. So, it'll have a more up-to-date look, have our current logo, and have a similar feel to the neighborhood entrance signs.
Thank you, Joseph. Do you have a motion?
How many do we approve the construction drawings with Landology?
I have a motion to approve by Councilman Fletcher. Do we have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Brott. Do we have any discussion?
So, what's wrong with the design of our existing?
So, and very good question. We could always require them to put it back exactly the way it looks. Now, are you talking...
I think you're talking about the existing to the neighborhood.
We've got the three new ones.
Okay, so you're talking about the new ones with the illuminated street names?
Can't we just hand them the plans and say, when you put it back, put this?
Absolutely, we could do that. Staff thought was, since it's entrance into the city, you may want it to be a little more substantial than that. You know, possibly have two pillars on either side of it. Option always existed, use the exact same style.
So, I will say that if you...
Or to put back what they tear out. Have them update the logo, but other than that, it looks the exact same.
Yeah.
If you think about the way those look right now, they sort of face you. They're front-facing as opposed to our entrances, they're more...
They're approach.
Yes, they're side-facing. So, I guess the theory would be that since these are entrances into the city, we want them to be more substantial and forward-facing.
That was the thought.
And yet, still have some design ties to the residential, correct?
Residential ones. It makes sense to me.
But you bring up a good point, that we could use that. And it would work. I just...
Man, it's $15,000, and you're not gonna actually do anything.
That was my question. What type of cost are you looking at per sign? I mean, you know, per monument?
So, I know that the ones we put in, I don't have the exact numbers, but they weren't cheap.
They were stupid expensive.
Yes. That's a good way to put it.
They were.
They were.
They look good, though.
You know, I'll throw the $100,000 out there. That's probably what you pay for it with all the betting and everything.
Yeah, and electrical.
I think that's about what they should have to be, maybe even a little bit more. Now, this $15,000 is just to put together some conceptual ideas that we could bring to council. You can look at it, pick the one you like, approve it. And then, the end product of this, the deliverable of this $15,000, is you'd have construction drawings for that monument.
The good news is the first one's paid for.
Well, that's what I was just about to say. If I'm not mistaken, I think that was part of the deal with Lifetime, wasn't it?
That's correct. They will pay for this sign. And then, we'd have a design and drawings in place to phase in the other signs over however many budget years as council sees fit.
Would it be possible to include this design in the construction cost of the first one that they are going to absorb?
It's a question we could ask, but...
Right. We wouldn't be having to design a new one if they didn't tear up our old one, so...
We wouldn't do this without...
Or maybe we could look at sharing that, because we wouldn't need to do it. Otherwise, you're correct.
The other option is they can carefully take the other one out and put it back the way it is.
Exactly. That might happen.
Yeah.
It might cost them more to carefully take it out than it would be to...
A lot of betting, man, but I think it's gonna be broken. Just looking at it.
The old one was so nondescript, I didn't even know that there was one there. I had to drive by just to, what? There's one over there? Oh, in the bushes there, okay.
Our expectation was that they would likely not be able to remove the sign without damaging it, breaking it, so...
And with that said, if they are able to...
Problem solved.
Even if this is approved, we don't have to spin it. We just, it goes away because they were able to successfully move the existing monument.
So, when are they gonna make that?
Then the question goes away. This was just kind of a preemptive of, hey, if it breaks, let's be ready.
You know, my thought process would be is I would like to, I think this is a good idea to go ahead and do it, but I would like to include this in the cost that we present them after they break the old sign and explain to them why this is the total package. I don't wanna, I'm not trying to pull one over on them, but just tell them, hey, we wouldn't be designing a new sign if you hadn't broke our old one. And if we can get them to pay for it, great. I think that's, you know, we've, I think we've done enough for them to warrant touch.
Yeah.
Good advertising for them, right there, right there, at their doorstep.
Absolutely. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. We've had discussion. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries 4-1. Item 14, discussion and possible action to approve the minutes of the January 8, 2020 regular meeting. Do I have a motion?
Move the, be approved as read.
Got a motion by Councilman Brott.
I have a second.
I have a second by Councilman McLeod. Do we have a discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0. Item 15, our second citizens forum. I didn't have anybody sign up to speak, but anybody? No? Okay. With that, we will move to item 16, which is city administrator updates.
Council, I've got just a few. First of all, street curb repairs are underway across the city. So, residents will be seeing that happen. Excuse me. We've also got a Coffee with Cops coming up next Saturday, the 22nd. It's gonna be at the Shenandoah Starbucks from 8:30 to 10:00. So, we hope that you can join us for that. The Chief Shaw reported that the police department recently did a seminar at the Focus Academy for Autism. And the goal of that was to teach these students how to respond in certain situations with the police, like when they're asked to show identification, when there's a traffic stop, that sort of thing. So, as you can guess, these folks process and handle information in situations differently. So, it was a very successful training session. And finally, I'm sure you've all noticed that Tech Dot sign that's laying up on the service road. We've been all over it, too. That is the responsibility of Tech Dot. We're just waiting for them to come get it. It's their sign. So, it was struck by a car, and that's what took it out. And so, hopefully, they'll get that taken care of soon. And that's all I've got.
Thanks, Kathy. Council inquiry, we'll start with Councilman McLeod.
I got a few things. So, there's a couple of things I'd like to, I'd like us to look into. Maybe we can talk about this. One, I've had a request that we look at how we broadcast our YouTube and to see if there's a way for us to capture what's on the screen. Many times, there's a presentation with a speaker, or like today, we were all talking about the Google Earth and the park. Anybody who's watching online would have no idea where we are at or what, how the discussion was moving. I think there's probably some software we could...
It's just a matter, you'd have to add another, a switcher, and you'd have to switch between speeds. It can be done, it's just additional cost of doing it.
Okay. So, I just would like to ask if you could take a look at that and see what that would involve. I'd also like us to ask, we've talked about it in the past, I think it'd be useful if, after we get open records and get them processed, we go ahead and post those, you know, who requested them, and the response to those requests on our website. I know some places, Postal Service and some of the others do that. So, that way, if we're getting repeated requests of the same information, the first place they can go look is, hey, has this question already been asked? And put that on the site.
Are you talking about, I'm sorry, just for clarification, is it similar to what's in the monthly report, the list?
Similar, just...
Maybe a live link.
A live link with a list. So, this was what was requested. And you click on that, here was the response. So, the response documents are there. We already have them. It's just a matter of making them accessible.
Do we have that capability, Chris, on our website?
Well, I mean, anything can be posted. I mean, it just depends on how, what format, and how we wanna present that information. I mean, what we want it to look like, we just have to determine that. So, what you're saying is if whatever request comes in, whether it's fulfilled, you want it just to list?
So, you have like, you know...
The only issue that I have, for instance, we get requests for personnel records for police.
Sure. And there could be some things that would...
Well, if we, I can't pick or choose. If the Attorney General says, this matter is public, then we're gonna be publishing, if we're gonna publish everything, then the requests we get for police personnel records will all be on the website. And I'm not sure that's really something we would want to do. And it would be any person. We get them for police, but for any personnel, they could request Chris's. And I just have a... I'm reluctant on that.
Okay. We can, it might be something we're talking about and digging into a little bit.
We've had those requests, and Bill and I discussed it. You know, there's some requests that come in that, you know, I'm just gonna be transparent, that I don't agree with because I feel like that it's intrusive upon, the information is misused. And so, like, they request our patrol officer's phone numbers. We have to give them that. I can't shield them from that. That's, of course, to the protest of the police department, but we can't. And there's other information that they request that, obviously, we give it out there, but it's just given to the person that requested. You put it out, you post it online.
We're probably discussing a little more than we should, but...
Sure.
Yeah, okay. Well, that's something we can look at. All right. And then, just keep on. Staff's doing a great job. Keep doing it. Thank you all.
Councilman Brott?
I'm good.
Thanks. You are good.
If I could say happy birthday to Councilman Brott, too. I overlooked that in my updates.
Happy birthday. Thank you, everybody.
Big 5-0.
Big 5-0. Twice.
Just to reiterate that Shenandoah Sharks, we've got a registration for all of our local kids. We certainly wanna get as many local kids on the team as possible. It's something we struggle with every year, and we wanna get the word out, make sure that, you know, all of the local Shenandoah kids that wanna swim have the opportunity to swim with the team, so...
Councilman Fletcher?
I just a reminder that early voting starts February 18 through the 28th at the Southern County, South County Community Center there off of Robinson Road. And Shenandoah will be a voting site on Election Day, March 3, currently, unless the voting election decides to change that. So, get out and support your candidate. That's all I got.
Councilman Raymaker?
I got a couple, but I'm gonna defer them until next meeting.
Oh, okay. I got a few quick updates. We all talked about, a little bit about David Memorial last meeting and just shortly thereafter. Okay, I can't even remember now who were there. Maybe, no, I guess, I guess actually, anyway, it's been too long. I've slept since then. But we had a meeting with Congressman Kevin Brady, and a representative from Commissioner Met's office was there, Mayor Toby Powell was there. We had a representative from Blile Engineering there. And so, anyway, long story short, just to give you an update, Congressman Brady was extremely sympathetic on the David Memorial project. He thinks it's a great project. And we are going to be getting, if we haven't already gotten a letter of support from him, have we already gotten it?
We've received nothing yet.
Okay, we're gonna be getting a letter of support from him. I know Heather, his assistant, has already contacted HGAC. He's on board with the project. And he's also already contacted the Army Corps of Engineer to see if they can help with the wetlands mitigation. So, long story short, we've got some additional support from Congressman Brady on trying to get that project pushed through. So, I know we've been talking about it for a long time, and we're all beating our heads against the wall, but it's nice to know that we have one more person helping us. The other thing is, is he also, or his office also, was willing to help out with our east side detention pond and the grant that we were looking for to help expand that. And so, Heather's dug into that a little bit. She's already contacted that particular office. We have a little bit more work left to be done, but they think it's a very Bible, they told her they thought it was a very Bible project. So, hopefully, we get some traction there, too. So, anyway, just keep y'all on the loop that our congressman is working hard for us.
Thank you for driving that, too.
Team effort, no doubt about it. So, other than that, thank you, everybody, for showing up. And look forward to, look forward to everybody having a happy Valentine's Day. So, for all the ladies, happy Valentine's Day. That's actually mine and my wife's anniversary. And I won't even, I won't even be in town. So, I'll be off on a work trip.
Sounds familiar.
So, yeah, no.
It went over like a lead balloon.
Yeah, it didn't go over well. So, happy Valentine's Day, everybody. Thanks for coming. Good night.